Speaker off again. Definitely that camera off. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the May 22 meeting of the Hamlin Boris Sleutmann. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being held in person and broadcast over Zoom from the Town House Auditorium. We are recording the meeting. Is there anybody else recording the meeting? Apparently not. Okay.
Dalton, no.
Nope, Dalton is. Hello Dalton. All right, first thing on the agenda or a couple of minutes, April 18th, April 24th. April 18th, as was pretty common during March and April, reviewing the town meeting coming forward. Meeting with the FFW. And we started a discussion about reorganizing the offices.
Motion to approve April 18th minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Pam, on those minutes, the minutes ugly and trust, have they contacted us at any more since then about wanting to use the transfer station for the throwaway trash? Okay. Well, it says here that, you know, there was discussions allowing the group to take the trash to the transfer stations. I didn't know if they had reached back out and.
From the contract?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to invite some comments on the April 24th where I was not there. If I can abbreviate it.
Yeah, we were. I had a issue to deal with two, so he abbreviated it. I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you both. Pam, again, good job on staying up to date. I think we're really, we're really. No, I'm serious. It's really good. It's okay. Take it or as it's said. There's an attaboy. There's gonna be a muffin on your desk tomorrow from Bob or something like that. Make a note of that, Bob.
Mouse.
Mouse, jeez. All right, so first thing, we have an advertised, is it 6:05? It is indeed. An advertised hearing for a poll permit. So, here it is in front of us. Pam or Bob, give us the update. Right, I might throw it out there.
Two pages on the OneDrive.
Did you have any contact with them? I mean, we can ask, Krista, are you from the grid perhaps, or no?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mandy from National Grid. I can't hear Pam too well, though.
Yeah, the light's not on. Your mic's not working. That one's not on either. Very dim light on yours. You see, it's not lit up red. It's very light.
He has my three lights.
Batteries. Yeah, there we go. That one looks good.
Now we're on two lights.
Don's off. Don's messing with us.
What do you mean? Nope, that light's not on either.
Yeah, I can hear everybody but Pam.
The batteries aren't working. That one's on.
Okay, Mandy, you're up.
Can she hear me? Okay, now I can hear you. Perfect. Okay, great.
Look at the light. Oh, that's fine.
Oh my.
My fiber comes, right?
Okay, go ahead, Mandy.
Okay, so I'm sorry, did Pam already read the hearing? Are you waiting for me to say something? I'm sorry.
Yes, I expected someone else. I didn't know that you were going to be presenting tonight, which is perfectly fine. The board has a copy of the plan that was submitted as well as the description.
Okay.
So, I just, the only thing I noted is it seems like a very long distance. Is that accurate?
Um, it's, so it's like around a mile from the intersection, but it's be, it's in front of, like, there's a new home going in 202. There's an existing home 198.
Okay, yes.
So, the nearest intersecting road was from Glendale and Ames Road.
Right.
So, yeah, 5,280 feet, like, around a mile. But it's between, it's new pole 10 and a half, so it's between pole 10 and 11.
All right, so can you, Mandy? Give us a little more background on this. We've got kind of a sketch. So, is this service to a new home? Or is this on the road?
So, it's on the road. And it's, on my sketch, it shows 122 feet from pole 10. So, it would be south of pole 10, which would be in front of house 198. There's long spans on that road. And in order to serve the new home 202, we have to do some roadwork and then, then take power into the new property.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So, pole 10 and pole 11 are existing. We're adding pole 10 and a half, pole 10 dash 50.
So, in between 198 and 202.
Yeah, I don't see pole 11 on the, is it pole 11? You just mentioned that on the map.
Yeah, so if you're, it's not on the map, but if you, the way the poles are numbered, so 10 is north.
Extrapolated back, okay, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. So, you drop an intermediary pole in between to service the new home? No?
Correct, to help in servicing, like the, um, the actual pole that's near their driveway is actually pole 10, but we have to put equipment on the road. So, and we need to run some wire, so we need to have pole 10 and a half to lessen the long span between 10 and 11.
Okay. Did we get a report from Mark or and/or Scott on this?
Scott mentioned it to me, but I didn't hear back from him. He's supposed to be on later or in later. And Mark, I did not hear back from. And he left before I.
But they did get a copy of it, so.
They did get a copy of it.
What side of the road are the poles on? Are they on the east side or the west side of Ames?
They are on the east there. Both 10, yeah, both 10 and 10 and a half are on the east. The new, well, the new pole will be on the same side, correct.
And have the abutters been notified that are gonna be, a new pole's going in front of their house?
Yes.
And no?
There were only two, two abutters.
Yeah, no concerns from the abutters? Did we know of?
No. Well, Petzold's gonna be serviced by.
Yeah, this is the number 198 where they said the pole is going in, so somewhere in this vicinity.
So, this is Tommy Petzold's house, I suspect.
Yes.
Yes, Gary lives down below in a house that has been there forever.
And they just put the house on the back, right?
Up and back.
Up in the back.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be a good pole, they say. It's good woods, American wood.
Seen one telephone pole, you seen them all.
Does the board have any more questions? Having interrogated this witness sufficiently, Don, do you have a motion?
Move approval of the pole position as outlined in the document provided by National Grid.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mandy, sorry to put you through the wringer like that.
No, I'm sorry for, I'm not used to doing a Zoom meeting. Usually I've been there in person, so I was having a little difficulty.
It's okay. Don, did you want to ask about that pole in front of Billy's or?
It's been replaced.
Oh, yeah, it's still there.
The half one is still there, right?
On Main Street here?
Yeah.
As of today, it's still broken.
Still there. They have no intention of replacing it. That's why I'm not paying my electric bill every year.
You said part of, it's the utility, so to speak, not so much their problem.
From what I was told, it's the NBI fiber line that's on there that hasn't been transferred yet.
Okay, Mandy, I guess we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mandy.
Don for signing. Okay.
You each have an original in your folders and, is that right?
No.
I've got two originals here, I think.
You have two there?
Yeah.
I have none.
Less than one.
Maybe I'm thinking of the.
We have to sign all, you have to sign all, like, kind of over something.
One goes to Verizon, one goes to National Grid, and one stays with us.
Okay, we've got two here.
I just got that.
Yeah, I just have that.
I got half a sheet.
Oh, okay, maybe I put the originals in yours, John.
Yeah. Okay. Next, reorg, following the annual election, the board typically votes to reorganize. Based on past precedent, I would nominate Craig Revest for chair.
Oh, oh, yeah, second.
Wow. Okay, any discussion?
Uh, yes.
You want a salary, really, right now?
Does the chair get more?
That's true in Connecticut, right? Another place to get a stipend.
Oh, sure. But you're elected to that as first elect, but you're.
Yeah, yeah, in Connecticut, yeah.
That's a full-time job.
Yeah.
And that's definitely salaried. All right, so, um, I know the last, you know, two cycles we've gone through and trying to set that precedent of, you know, the last, the last selectman who'd continue on and, you know, have the option to be chair in the election year. I'm sure you both know, I own my own business and I operate and I've taken on a lot more workload since the first of the year and a lot more responsibility and activities going on that I need to focus on. So, basically with that said, you know, I think going forward, we should continue our status quo for the next six months. And allow John to continue on, and then in six months, reorg the board and allow Don to start early for the next term. So, that would be my thoughts going forward because of my schedule and workload being just a little bit more than it's been in the last couple of years.
Interesting. Okay, we have a current motion, so let's finish that. All those in favor of Craig as chair, vote aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Well, we're honoring his wishes.
Yeah, yeah.
You were against it, so he voted no?
Yeah.
Make a note, he voted against you.
He voted no. We all voted no.
Okay.
All right, so.
So, I would move that we continue with a status quo for six months. And at that time, this would allow John to continue on for another six months, and in six months, we reorg and allow Don to start the next term before his chair position would be up six months early.
I will say that was done before. A few years back, Norm Sharest was in the rotation. And he declined the chairmanship because he was currently chair of assessors. And I had, so I continued on for six months and Vinnie started six months early to split, so to speak, the historical year of the person who's up for election. There is somewhat a precedent for that. There was a continuity, is that why?
Take it.
You're making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, the motion, yeah.
Reorg in January again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
November. November would be six months.
Yes.
You said January.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right, well, what about?
Okay, now for Board of Health. I'll entertain nominations for Board of Health Chair. Actually, I don't have any credit to continue as Board of Health Chair.
Second.
That was like the adjourn, that was like the adjournment.
Summer, I'm getting out of this.
I'm not digging any holes.
Second.
How do you feel about that?
That's fine. Well, like I said, we'll continue on. I think we should continue on with our liaison spots, too, just.
All those in favor of Board of Health Chair being Craig?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so, since the status quo is still there, are we comfortable with the liaisons as set?
C.
Choice C?
C.
Okay.
What is C? You always pick C when you don't know, right?
Right.
No matter what language?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not even a vote, so we're continuing on.
Yeah.
All right, fine. Okay.
Oh, I thought we'd never get through that.
Well, dragged it out, Don, turning your microphone off.
It's not official then, right?
Better read his lips on the camera. All right, uh, well, that moved right along quickly. Townhouse renovation issues. Okay, I asked to put this on here because it seemed like we really didn't have closure on what happened before. Time Bond came back with, after discussions with Bob, with a presentation that I'm not really sure spoke to where the board wanted to go. And it opened in my mind, it brought more questions up than gave us answers. I mean, first off, with that type of thing, no library. What do we do about a library? So, take the extra money and buy an iPad for everybody and just go digital. So, we, I invited Yvonne from Time Bond to our meeting.
Well, are you, are you talking about the?
The Town House, the plan they presented, they talked about eight upgrades and stuff.
You're talking about the space thing?
Yes.
Wh- what about the $7 million?
Well, that's, that's part of, you know, what that, that kind of number really brought to us, especially when it kicked out, and now the need for a $10 million library building. So, um, hi, Yvonne.
Hi, how are you doing? Good evening.
You know, Craig, that's what I think we need. We need headsets like that, seriously.
Let's do it.
They block out no background noise, so they're pretty good for that.
Boy, that's a great idea.
So, yeah, please go ahead.
So, and you, you came before us before, and again, we appreciate the effort that everybody there put in. And I think partly the concern I had before was that maybe the board had an idea, maybe it wasn't presented in a completeness. I know Craig had concerns about. If we're talking about, you know, looking for a solution for the town hall, we need to look at it from top to bottom, brick, mortar, the whole bit. And you talked about HVAC, you talked about electric, you talked about structural integrity, and did we check all those boxes, Craig? I mean, that was a big concern you had at the beginning.
Yeah, I think the report was fairly detailed in a lot of that information. That's why the dollar analysis was so high, you know? Was it the four to $7 million?
Right.
Just to bring this building, well, first up to code and second, address all the known issues that have been here for quite some time.
And again, it did address some space issues, mostly by moving out the largest apartment and freeing up the second floor for, or third floor or whatever, for, you know, expansion of offices downstairs. But I wonder, did you see any kind of solution that didn't move the library out? Or a better utilization of our current? Does it back to you, Yvonne?
Okay, so, um, it depends on what you are looking for. What I was told is that the current departments that are within the town hall are lacking on space. They need more area for physical storage. They need the room for growth, meaning more employees, an additional room to meet in. And the building was supposed to also come up to accessibility code as well, and that ties in as well. So, those were my parameters to work with.
And I'm guessing by your report is that, kind of what you're saying, there's no way to satisfy those things without the direction you went. Because you have a constrained space, if you will, and you really can't, how do you do expansion, meeting those issues and keep the same footprint? And you're saying this is unfortunately, if you want to take care, something has to go to be able to satisfy the greatest number of things. And of course, accessibility is kind of out there. You, you, once you do something, you have to check that box.
It depends how much you do, honestly, as far as accessibility, however, with what we're being tasked with, yes. And, and so, let me just phrase it this way, with, I guess with, you know, expansion, physical expansion of growth of the current town hall. Everyone that, I guess, you know, exists in that space to expand, that there's no other way except to get rid of the library and, and either put the library in another building or put the town hall in another building. I don't know which direction that can go in. But yeah, based on the parameters I was given, that, that would be the only solution. I mean, there is no more space in the building, so, no, I'm not sure what to do there.
Sort of getting rid of the auditorium and re-tasking that space, but again, that, that, you know, we talked about that, turning that into office space and just saying, okay, we don't have that common space. That's another hard choice at that point. Uh, okay, so, trying to, again, same thing. Bob brought up a point, you know, we have a storage issue here. We have a space issue. We tasked Time Bond to present us with a solution, and we need to put it to bed. They brought back something. We have a report. And do we say thank you for that report? Well, we're gonna have to look in another direction, or are we officially and say we're not really interested at this point in building another library, of building a library in our current? Although Craig has made the point before, well, do we, hate to say it, um, you know, flesh it into the senior center thing? Is that a possibility?
I, I think we need to backtrack our thought completely and get creative. I mean, what, what is our long-term goal? You know, 10 years from now? You know, what, what do we look like? You know, are we still stuck with a town hall that needs four to $7 million worth of repairs in 10 years? And then we're just gonna kick the can down? I mean, are we gonna throw money into, let me do it this way, are we gonna throw money into a police station to find out we're not gonna host dispatch? And then now we need a fire department where we could have made a municipal complex how many years ago? I mean, I think a lot of the shortsightedness over the last 10 years or so has started to rear its head now of, you know, capital needs for the town. You know, what do we need to do now to set up, you know, the future for my kids in town, where they're not worried about expenditures down the road or where they're going to, you know, go to pay their bills or yada, yada, yada. I, I said it before, and I, you know, I thought it'd be a great idea. If we're doing a senior center expansion, why not incorporate a little bit more into that project to incorporate the library? You know, then we know we have a strategic plan for the senior center and the library and the longevity, you know, of a multi-year plan there. Then we can slowly address, where do we do with town offices after that, you know? I, I think, you know, just by jumping in to remodel this building is, you know, it's pretty outrageous in price, but we know we need, have issues and we know we need to address stuff. You know, let's not just put an expansion on a building to find out in five years, hey, we should have did something different. My point.
I don't know if I would have called it short-sightedness, per se. We did look into those things. We went down to Richie Neal's office and met with him about getting funding for a, basically a public works, a public building that would include fire and police. Funding was not available for that. We also looked at various parcels in town if the town wanted to take it on themselves, and there was no space. Except for the one space that unfortunately on Allen Street got snapped up at a church instead, and that was the only one that was identified as large enough for our needs. So, it was something that was on our radar. We did, we did have it on our thing to try and accomplish that. But your point is right. You know, we need to be progressive thinking. We can't be married to any one solution. We have to think outside the building. We're outside the box. That's where we need to go. As Don has said before, that's why, you know, we're in these seats. We have to present these type of ideas to the town. Not go on for going on, go on for leaving.
We got, as I say, we got six options, basic options, right? We can do nothing, like, you know, and just continue to fix things as they break, you know, hopefully fix them as they break. We can think about a three to five-year plan to rehab this building, but that would mean, I think, if you're rehabbing some of these offices, those offices are gonna move out temporarily someplace, you know? We could abandon the building. If they close Thornton Burgess, there's the option of going over there. You could create a town hall. You could create a library. And you also could contain, you could contain a senior center annex and that.
Programming over there, for sure.
Move some things over there, some programs over there. You could find a new location, you know, but then you have to think about, what do you do with this building? Redevelopment plan for that, right? Or you could demolish this building and build a new one on the site. But now you're talking $100 million, probably.
Well, they were working home for a while, basically.
You know, everyone have to work from home for a long time, or, or, you know, you'd have to find someplace else to put the people. So, uh.
Obviously, a couple of those plans have been on the radar. You're our liaison to the strategic committee, and, you know, I've been beating the school drum for a while.
Yeah, they've been talking about closing the school for a while, you know what I mean? And it's one of the options out there. I mean, it's certainly a usable building. It can be, you know, but there's a conversion cost there, too, you know, you know, so. But we gotta do something because I, I just, you're right about making some kind of decision moving forward because it's like with the fire department. We spent $80,000 on consultant fees for the fire department, and we're no further than we were day one.
Well, honestly, I think the solution that we presented, we came up with, they didn't.
Yeah.
Why can't you just go out to the side?
Yeah.
You know, after $80,000.
Yeah.
Where's the, why come they're paying you and me?
Yeah, I, you know, and, and I even have the question if we, you don't have to do that because we've got that one bay that we could move, but we're not on the fire department also.
But it does speak to, we gotta.
Fits into the capital needs.
Yeah.
Right, but Fisher cut bait here. We can't keep, you know, putting these on the agenda. We've gotta move some of them off and move closure.
Don makes a good point about, you know, TWB, but I, I think I said it at our meeting with the school committee that I didn't want any decision we made with that building to outcome, change the outcome of their decision.
Right.
I want them to do what's best for the student.
Yeah, they gotta see what they're gonna do first.
You know, so.
However, I don't think, and we kicked around this before, because if we're looking at that, I still don't think it's a bad idea to get a sense of updating. We had a structural analysis done of the building five, six years ago.
Thornton Burgess.
Thornton Burgess. We own the building. I think it is our job to make sure it's still in good shape, even if it's still a leased building. We're the landlord.
Right.
We should know. And if something's deficient, then you go back, do you split the capital cost to fix it? Or do you do it because you're the landlord? I don't think it's a bad idea to get a sense of where we are, even if it stays as a school building, which is certainly proper. As landlords, we should know it's in good shape. Obviously, you have a concern about the roof. We've talked before about a plan. Solar companies have approached us with potential splitting the cost. If they put panels on there, they'll pay for the roof, things like that. There are options out there. Obviously, it wants to be a continual go over there. Look, we talked to Park and Rec last week. They want to expand their programs on the, on the property. So, everybody acknowledges it is the town thing. Again, we're getting a bit far afield here. Go back to our original thing. We have the report from Time Bond. We thank Yvonne and her team for what they did, but I don't see a place for the report as presented in our plans.
I think it's eye-opening for sure, you know, what this building needs.
Right.
Yeah. Definitely let you know that's, needs addressing.
Right. I mean, we can walk by and see the tiles falling off, the cement coming apart, but when you see them all on one big laundry list, it, just like you said, Craig.
Is it true we don't have hot water in the building?
Mm-hmm.
It's true.
Well, we should take care of that, don't you think?
You can't get anybody to do the work.
Why?
How long is that been?
Two years.
I think two people declined to do the work on it, right? Two of the, two, maybe three?
You can't get, I mean, Jane has attempted to get people to give her a quote and. One refu, one doesn't want the job at all and one has given us a price.
See, I don't want to do a price.
Well, it's, I think he's given two different quotes. But I don't know about his capacity as. It relates to the town.
Okay.
It's hard to see how. Renovation of this building without allowing the future space needs.
Right.
Is a plan for the next thirty or forty years. I don't know what the new space needs will be, but. For example, about if we hire. A conservation agent and water cor, uh, stormwater coordinator. Uh, we're gonna find a desk for them and I'm not sure that it would all fit down where the conservation commission is.
Right, it's a small office.
Without knowing what the future space needs would be. Wouldn't it be difficult, it would be difficult. Actually do a plan to renovate the building without allowing for additional space needs.
Well, you see what happened in Islam Meadow. I mean, they had a building done dating from the eighteen hundreds. They updated as much they could. And finally had to bite the bullet and buy the, uh, the bank building down by Stop and Shop.
Yeah, the Titanic show.
And like Craig said, if they'd met foresight, maybe thirty years ago, they would have bought the Rockies Plaza instead and expanded municipal complex. You know, with the library and all that. So. Like I say, everything has to be out there. Uh, like Craig, you talk about the fact we're now like five years, 10 years, just like we charged the senior center committee. Think ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty years out the ro, out the box, uh, we need to think the same way. That being said, looking for direction.
I mean, we have a couple of variables that are unknowns at the moment, you know, they could provide to be valuable to us as far as, you know, location. You know, it's, do we sit on it until we know those outcomes or do we continue looking for outside-the-box ideas?
Well, like you say, we have a couple. One, we're aware of. Two, like Don mentioned, you know, really are a little constrained about keeping Thornton Burgess in our mix because honestly. They have at least, it's their building, you know? We know that there's chatter on their side, but right now, you can't force their hand. It wouldn't be right.
No.
No. All we can do is keep putting Band-Aids on this until we have a little better option.
Yeah, I think we could, we have to keep putting, we keep putting Band-Aids on it. But the other thing I think we have to do is to really. Tell the town that here's the real situation. We're talking either, you know, seven million or, you know.
Probably gonna be expensive either way.
Either way, you know, so.
I think the number for the police station, for instance, was three million and we're servicing roughly about, is it one something a year to service that debt? It was a twenty-year debt.
Yeah.
So that's your sense right there. Okay.
I don't think we're having the answers tonight.
No, but Yvonne, we owed you to get back to you and let you know where we were with that.
Okay.
If you come back with a million-dollar plan that gives everybody a bigger office, that would be great.
That would be magic, some kind of magic in my head. I don't know if I can do that, but I wish.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Right, so.
You know, one other point, other than conservation, which wants to move upstairs, none of the departments are complaining about space other than storage space. Cabinets are just taking up too much space within the office, but assuming we deal with the cabinet. Problem. The offices, I don't, I don't see where we need now or in the indefinite future to add more space to any of the offices.
Yes, but that's the same, there's been discussion at the senior center building committee, oh, you need more space, we're gonna build some closets. Well, when you put closets out, you take away floor space. Now, I'd like to see, and I had mentioned this before. A more of an engineering department like they have in Warburgham where you have conservation, planning, building, all sharing a common area because their plans are all common too. But we haven't got the layout where we can do, well, actually, if we re-task this room, that'd be great for that. But then the library wouldn't have programs.
Put cubicles in here.
Put a second floor.
That's a need.
Well, you could move the clerk's office up here.
Oh, yeah, you mentioned that before. That'd be, that'd be ideal.
You could give the clerk's office, cause then this, you know, it's kind of like the first thing in the door. She probably gets more business than anybody and then they could have that whole floor down there.
Actually, if you look at the size of the office now, it's maybe what, half the size of this room?
Yeah.
You know?
Now, now the tree's gone. We can go out farther.
We can go further, yeah.
Is that wall falling down anyhow, Don? Just push it forward, right?
One of the things that, that, that checklist of things that they checked out, I was, there's a lot of, there's a lot of little maintenance things in there that we really could take care of now. Like, for instance, the electrical box doesn't have a cover on it, you know, a hundred bucks. I think we got a hundred bucks.
Well, same thing. We talked, I brought.
No hot water.
Brought up last week, we don't have a maintenance guy.
Yeah.
Since it's a bit of a budget thing, and I have reached out, I believe there's somebody in the highway department that'd be willing to take on that role after their highway hours. And since they do end at three thirty, they would have an hour or so during the closing day to come over here and do things. I think we should investigate that with Mark. You know, somebody already on the payroll, basically, so we're not the, not a new employee.
You recall, you recall, you recall a while back, I suggested that we have a. Facilities group that goes around and checks things like the building inspector, the electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, but that create great anxiety amongst them.
You know, our de facto facilities manager is Jane. He was telling me today about the agenda for the near future. Cleaning the mini splits, getting the windows washed, buying paper for the restrooms and so forth. That's something that she does and that's a function that we're going to lose.
Right, and so who's, who's gonna do that once she's gone?
Well, that's.
You know, are we gonna run out of toilet paper in the bathroom?
Probably.
Right, uh. On the agenda. Grant and ARPA update.
I, uh, worked on this today based on the way. The items have been coded, but I think earlier was pointed out that, uh, we can recode. The assessor's monitor and hard drive. Other than that, I think the other items here. Are where we've spent the money.
I don't see in here, Bob, and I was looking through the figures from Cliff. On ARPA expenditures and there was McClure Engineering for the Water District. There's a five thousand dollar. Payout here for them. But I don't, is that, I see you got the, the well pump repairs and there's zero expended on the invoices paid.
Well, I. This needs a little bit more work, plus you want to know about grants. I've been doing some work on that, updating them as well. So I would suggest that Jane is going to be pulling some bills tomorrow. Just to do a check on what we have here. But I, I'd like to bring this back. I worked on it today, but I'd like to bring it back next week. After we have looked at the bills themselves, making sure that these numbers, these numbers, the numbers are accurate. We have absolutely everything included. Um, there might be one or two that, uh, we do not have included that have been coded for ARPA.
But just another question, Bob. When I'm, when I'm looking at the ledger from Cliff, there's a lot of various payroll expenditures in the ARPA account.
Yes.
And I don't know if some of the bills that we have here are like. You know, incremental bills, you know, instead of billing us all at once.
Well, they, uh, the, they are incremental bills. In fact, for example, the Police Bridge Academy expenses. They come in almost weekly when they're running the academy and I have to sit there and add them up. Uh, same, same with the salary.
You know, and there's, there's one here that says Holyoke Medical Center coming out of ARPA funds. I mean, I don't. Curious why?
That is, yes, we have that one and that is included. In the expenses for Bridge Academy because that was physical test. And they cost, by the way, those physical tests for going into the Bridge Academy cost over five hundred dollars.
And then like guardian uniform and supply, are we, is that for?
That's also, that was also part of the Bridge Academy expenses. They had to buy, they had to buy them a shirt with a, with a label on it.
So the Bridge Academy expenses, that is a hard number though, right? I see you have down here eighteen, it's not gonna, even though it's coming in weekly, it's not gonna exceed.
No, it's not gonna explode. Um, we're gonna go back over it again just to make sure that everything is included, but when they come in, I have a, I have a stack about like that. And I keep them, right, cause I'm, so you have, you're estimating we have five eighty-five in unused ARPA funds?
No.
And that doesn't jive with, with what Cliff.
Right, he's, he's got seven oh seven.
Yes, yeah.
But you're estimating that we have five twenty-five in unencumbered funds.
Yes, correct.
I mean, some of them, like you said, some of them haven't been paid yet, okay. And you might get that up to five thirty if you recode some of these ones like Craig mentioned, you know, some of the computer stuff, but.
Zoom licenses, assessor's hard drives.
Higher. Which goes back to, you know, projected need we had for ARPA money, the Water District expansion. Uh, now Craig, you talk, you're working with, or John, John's working with Bob on possibly another grant.
Um, Bob put in for.
I put in for funding from the one-stop program for extending the water system.
Yeah, a rough number.
Four hundred thousand dollars. That's why I'd asked, uh, mentioned, I think recently, if we could have a hard estimate. Because they're going to ask for that.
Sure.
That process has just opened up. In other words, you, you do an expression of interest. You tell them what you're interested in doing and then you do the application. The application period is about ready to open. It's gonna run through June. And so I'm going to need a, a consultant's estimate. To present to them, reinforce the grant proposal.
John Plaster's been working with Tian Bond and Peter's coming to our meeting on the thirtieth and he's hoping to have some more information for us then, right? Is that? He said he would, okay.
That would relieve the pressure on ARPA.
Oh, sure. Now, if you come up to eight, nine hundred, I'm sure you're well.
You know, that's, this is, this is an area where they're very serious.
What would be the timing though on something like that? Because obviously, we've talked in the past about. The longer we wait to do the project, the more testing we have to do. Not that we're not funded for it, but.
I think unfortunately, you're gonna have to put the ARPA money up front and then try and reimburse that account if, if the grant funds come in. I'm, I'm very positive about the grant.
I, but I, I'm concerned based on what we've heard before, that we're gonna need the grant, ARPA and some of the grant money to make this, this happen with. You know, if you want all the pump house work plus the, and then we've almost heard about the engineering costs on top of it. I wouldn't be surprised if this runs up to six hundred by the time you're done.
Peter said the, the piping and the, the hookups are easy. It's, you know, the upgrades at the pump house that need to happen, which is gonna, you know, be the biggest hit.
And I think you had a good suggestion about potentially making it a circle to get away from any calcification, make a loop there, make it run better.
Up to engineers.
Right, but I mean, it's, it's a good thought.
Yeah.
So. So anyhow, back to the thing, you feel this is a pretty accurate detailing of ARPA at this point.
Again, I, I worked on it today to upgrade it. It needs more work and I can give you. An absolutely up-to-date chart next week. I don't anticipate significant changes, but we'll double-check everything and give you the grant update as well.
Yeah, I think your left-hand column is the key part there because that's the encumbered amount.
That's right.
Right.
That's exactly.
And then the right-hand side is you and Cliff just getting it together.
Yeah.
Right. And then the oversight, like Craig mentioned, a couple of these are really not ARPA money. Make sure they don't go against that account, you know? We keep it there, but I think, Don, I'd say we're pretty accurate. We, we allocated a million dollars against ARPA.
Yeah.
You know, between the excavator and this and that. Givele to death by ducks, if you will, just, you know, keeps creeping up on you. Sixty for switches and this and that and all.
I did talk with the business manager at the school district. About the difference between the sixty, which they requested and the two, twenty, twenty-six hundred that they billed us so far. The answer to that is the project really gets underway next year, fiscal twenty-four. So we're gonna see more bills and chances are we're gonna get to that number in two thousand twenty-four.
For the network upgrade.
Yes, yes.
Bobby, you talked before that you were worried that there was gonna be a clawback on ARPA. I did some Googling. I don't see.
It's all COVID now, but I mean.
I mean, because you see other towns, I mean, I think I saw on Mass Live that some committee, I don't know if it was Springfield or Worcester. Get another allocation from their ARPA things to good projects. And I didn't see in their article where they're worried about, oh, my gosh, we have to get all these requests done by a certain time or else they'll take the money back.
Oh, no, no, we have, we have time to spend these funds. I'm just concerned about what I'm reading, about what they're doing in Washington and that, that, that in order to get the debt, the debt ceiling increased. What kind of a deal is gonna be made?
Bob, come on, you know who you can call.
Clawback remaining COVID funds of which there's sixty billion and who knows?
Well, the COVID part, we, heck, we even had to pay back, uh, what'd you say, fourteen thousand?
Yes.
That they said was not appropriate, which was crap. Right. All right. Well, thank you for the detail here. Looks, looks pretty good. So we really have, uh, two other things on the agenda. We have our ongoing discussion about where we stand on our upper management, if you will. We do have an executive session to discuss later and we do have our NBT. Scotty coming by or?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, great. Um, we have some correspondence and the TA's report. Uh, any order we want to take these in? Obviously, exec session, I'd like to keep it closed out with it. Bob, why don't you give us, uh, your report?
Okay.
While you're cranking here.
Uh, we've had two Zoom meetings since the last report on the sixteenth and the twenty-second about shared service with the town of Granby. Which would include a conservation agent and stormwater manager or coordinator. They're positive. PVPC had a DLTA grant to help coordinate this for us. And, uh, they've been very active and energetic, uh, at our meetings. Ted Zibert comes to the meetings. He participates. He's the liaison with the commission. They are also interested in Granby in twenty hours and they like the whole business of trying to assign stormwater responsibilities. It's all about water and, uh, I, you know, I'm, the MOU was, uh, the ones that you've seen before. Is ready again. They just changed the name from Ludlow to Granby and they've added a little bit on the stormwater. And it's ready for the selectmen to look at and I was gonna put it on the agenda for next week. The, the Granby selectmen are gonna act on June fifth, because they, they don't meet every week. You may have seen some of the correspondence about. The, you know, the board and committee handbook needing some updating. Particularly, incidentally, there's a lot of activity now around the court decision. That, um, seems to permit more rude and abrasive comments at public meetings. Not something that I think we welcome, but nevertheless. There's an MMA webinar coming up on that and just what the town, what, what the town meetings, board and committee meetings should allow. And what, what they can do, uh, if it becomes excessive. I did ask, uh, the Tony Gentile for information about the audio system at the dispatch center in Wilbraham. Uh, we have two big trees down on the Scantic River and we've had some complaints. We have two big trees down on the Scantic River, and we've had some complaints. Gary Weiner in particular is concerned that this was gonna contribute to even more problems there, and that they should be removed. I know that the board has looked at this in the past. I would urge the board to look at it again, we.
I, I always thought the issue, this has been ongoing for decades, I always thought the issue was making sure Concom was happy about it, and I thought in the past, they've had some reluctance to.
Yeah, where are the trees that you're talking about now?
Lower Scantic.
On the, basically on the west side of, of Summers Road?
Well, I'll take it up with the Conservation Commission.
Well, Ted's on right now, but I really think this is something, you know, you cannot do without Concom signing off on it. And Ted, you wanna speak?
Yeah, if I can inter, interject, John, um, back before COVID, we had one on, is it Walnut Road or Walnut Street, that's in back of the B, in back of old Billy Bonds place?
Yep.
Um, the, the people there petitioned, and your vote at the time was, you, the board didn't particularly care, and, um, they could do what they wanted as far as you were concerned, but the town wouldn't pay the bill. That was what the resident was looking for. We contacted DEP, DEP says you can, but you can't use heavy equipment, it only can be hand removed, which is if you're cutting a big tree, I don't care how you slice it, if you chainsaw off a foot of tree, but it's, it got a four, a four foot diameter, it's hard to handle by manpower. So that incident was gonna cost the, the resident somewhere between 15 and 1800 dollars to remove one or two trees, because of the labor involved. We also had one down on River Park, and that one that the neighbor did go through, and they hand removed that one. There's been requests since then, but it all boils down to at least what the board said back a couple of years ago, the town wouldn't pay any of the bill, DEP says it only can be done by hand. So it makes it difficult for the average homeowner to have that done. And of course, they, whenever they do it, they have to request, and it has to go through all the paper process.
Sure. I recall that, and somebody said to me, so if a tree falls off my property, and I have to get it removed, the town will pay to get it removed? Like, no, so, so what's the difference? Just because it fell in the river, the town's gonna pay to get rid of it? When, if it falls in the back of my property, I have to pay a tree service to come get rid of it? And that was their concern when it came up, well, will the town pay for it?
Right.
Right. What makes the, what's different?
There isn't any difference really.
Right, right. Um, I think actually, I recall, I don't know if Craig, you were on the board, at the time you talked like, well, okay, but can we get more volunteers to help with it? This is something that, like you said, Ted, Ted, the issue is accessibility, the weight of it, the fact you can't use anything heavy to help you with it there. You know, sure, trying to drag the darn thing out from 100 feet away, yeah.
Right, yeah, well, with some of the new equipment, the, the big firms have with, with the big booms, that is possible, but that's a big vehicle to move near the river, you can't get within 25 feet of it, and you, you really can't do much within 50 feet, so it takes a heavy crane to be able to reach out that far, so it's basically not feasible, so it's a, a hand job to, to get those out, and it's not easy and not inexpensive.
Right, okay. And we just talked about ARPA, you know, you're taking, can we use ARPA money for it? Yeah.
I'm sure we could, but in connection with that, through the MVP process, Gary Weiner has brought up the need to deal with silting in, uh, on the Scantic.
Sure.
Which is going to make flooding even more of a threat. And I think the only choice there would be probably something that's not possible, and that is to get the Army Corps, since it's a navigable river, get the Army Corps to step in, see what they can do.
Well, and it was done 40, 50 years ago, I mean, they, they're responsive to it, you know, that they allowed it. Okay, and I'm sure working with Concom, DEP, Corps of Engineers, a few more alphabets will, will jump in.
So you're gonna contact the Army Corps to see what, yeah, what's possible?
Or is Steve going to? Is Steve and Mary assisting you with this, or just advice? Okay.
And then lastly, we were notified today that the town will receive $668 in the next round of the opioid settlement, so.
Oh, sure.
That's our proportion.
From the state?
Share, yeah.
From the state?
Do we ever decide what we're doing?
Yeah, what about our other, what about the other checks?
This, this is, this is coming from the law firms in Virginia.
Okay.
That launched the case. They're doing, I don't know how they got the authority to do this, but funding has been provided, and they're doing the distribution according to a formula.
Did we ever figure out what we're doing with that money?
Like, it's limited, that's why it's a problem to allow that to flow in.
I was gonna say, sure, but it's not sure.
General, uh, uh, free cash, because free cash is something you can do anything with. These funds are restricted. We have to do something related to drug problems.
Can we, thinking outside the box, create a scholarship for the high school graduating with that fund? I mean, not a lot of money there, you know, kinda graduating senior.
And we donate it to the Above the Influence Club, I mean, they need money for programs.
One of the things that was discussed among, at a re, a meeting of the regional administrators was combine all of our funds and do something creative relative to combating drug addiction.
Well, I'm saying, I know we have that, is it J, the LECO that runs that, that group?
Yeah, I think you're right.
You know, they, from what I see.
If, if we're getting the money locally, why don't we keep it locally? I mean.
That's what I mean, that's the Minnetoga, him and the Wilbraham kids right there, so, and maybe ask Nick, maybe they'd like to kick in the Wilbraham money too at the same point and give it to that group.
If I may, what, uh, something through the library and one of their teenage programs?
Well, that's me, that is that teenage program that they, you know, work with all the kids at high school, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Well, ideas.
But I like an idea of the regional thing, him, them, Wilbraham, working with, in a savers group they already have, but they probably could use the money, so. Didn't they have a walk during the, um, last week or something like that, at the high school?
There's something I saw on Facebook.
Yeah. Okay, couple other things I asked about during your report, to go over the parade?
Yes.
Yeah.
Here's the program.
Hot night.
Invocation, Master of Ceremonies, John.
Well, I mean, let's go back, back to the beginning, so we're gonna meet up at St. Mary's.
We're gonna meet at 10:00 AM, St. Mary's parking lot, march to, uh, this area, and have the program over, uh, on that green space across the street. You will introduce Mark Stelter, the invocation, uh, who, he's the, he's a priest at St. Mary's School, correct? Uh, then you'll introduce the director of the Minnetoga Regional High School Band, and ask those gathered to join in singing the National Anthem. And you will then introduce Jared, who will introduce the guest speaker. Then you will introduce Girl Scouts and Brownies, lay a wreath at the monument, throw flowers in the river in the memory of the departed veterans. And then the, the regional high school band will perform. You'll then introduce, who, who's the benediction?
I don't know yet. I, I think Jared has reached out to someone.
Right. And I don't know, so the lady at the Federated Church has retired, told me, I ran into her here, told me she's moving to Old Orchard, and they have a new person coming up from North Carolina, I believe, so.
And then you'll present the Handman VFW honor guard. VFW perform taps and a gun salute, and you're gonna invite everyone to the annual hot dog roast and ice cream social at the fire station, and then there's a band. Case of rain exercises will be held in, in the townhouse auditorium at 11:00 AM, the hot dogs and the social to follow.
Excellent, thank you, Bob. And a further note, we've been invited to participate in the annual 4th of July parade in Islom Meadow. The QR code to scan if we wanna go. Don, it's only a three and a half mile long lake.
I'll be, I'll be north.
Well, you know, again.
I guess. I'll be in Vermont.
That's consistent.
On the lake.
What got you there?
But I'll be thinking about you.
Thank you so much. I'll be saying, walking with Richie Neil to say hi to you for you, thank you. Greg?
I may be away as well. Fourth of July weekend's a busy weekend.
Rhode Island, was it?
Maine.
Maine, okay. Well, extend our, Summer will be there, carrying the flag, so to speak. A couple of things, didn't we get a request from the COA Board to put somebody, an appointment on the agenda?
I put it on for next week.
Next week, okay, fine. Let's see, two things that I'd like to bring up under your report, which came up, obviously, we have a continuation of a dog issue, and I think, I don't know if the board's aware, but the Huskies on Raymond Drive, the Williamses, have had some incidents in the past couple of weeks. And the last one involved neighboring chickens on Weir Road where they were seeing killing the chickens. I think we're at the point where we need to come in and have them in next week, and be prepared to go to the next step. We really can't discuss it right now, it wasn't on the agenda, but I'm just bringing you up that this needs to be, and so be prepared for that. Um, and I heard, I guess I saw on Facebook, they were out again today, so. Did hear from Shelley that one of them has moved, but there's still two there. The other thing came up at, when I was over visiting the reelection in Wilbraham, Chief Farnsworth spoke to me and asked what the board was doing in consideration of maybe expanding regional dispatch, and I believe we had heard before that there was conversation with Belcher Town about possibly joining regional dispatch. Uh, again, I don't really have any facts from Tony or that group, but from Jeff's standpoint, and obviously he works with EOPS, his point is that the state is really looking to, they're not gonna authorize any more two-town dispatch. You know, we got in under the wire, if you will, and they're gonna look very favorably if we go to three. He wasn't making a representation of it, but he said, the funding is gonna be increased because now you're three. He said, in his mind, the clock would be reset also, and that's something for us to think about, because Don, remember, we're gonna be through the three-year grace period, and it'd depend for, you have to reset the clock, boom, and it would still be housed in Wilbraham. So I'm looking at it going, well, what's the difference to him though? Except, we're not gonna be paying any money for another three years, if that happens. As long as they can staff it properly, personally, I don't see a downside. So I think it's something we should explore, if, maybe reach out to Nick and Tony and say, is this something that your board will be, you know, working with Belcher Town and bringing back to the regional group? Now, there is things in the contract that obviously we have to amend at that point, and I'm not even sure, not, you know, if you're having your, we just both have quarterly meetings or something like that?
We do.
You do? Okay. Has this come up at that time?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we can't, uh, here, sit on Don's lap.
So yeah, that has been a, a discussion amongst the executive board, and it is in consideration. They're still waiting for, um, Wilbraham's board to make a decision, but it sounds like it's a.
Do you see a downside to it?
No, I don't, I don't, I think it's a plus.
If they keep it in Wilbraham, how is it different?
Yeah, they're gonna keep it in Wilbraham.
They're gonna keep it in Wilbraham, and I, and I believe Tony was looking for more staffing too, which is all I need to, would be an asset.
So my point about the resetting the clock, if that happens, it's a win for us.
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
Because they treat it as a new grant and a new start point.
Yeah, that would be.
This would, again, this is coming from Jeff, so.
Right, yeah, right. That'd be more of Tony being able to lay that out for us, I didn't, haven't heard of a start point, but I did hear that Belcher Town was interested in coming over.
Okay, right. So, no downside to that?
No, not at all, I think it's a plus.
All right, thank you.
Do we have to vote on that identification?
Yeah, please, thank you.
We have the old harmless agreement for St. Mary's for, uh, Sunday, or for Monday's parade?
I don't think you said the whole thing.
St. Mary's Roman Catholic Parish.
No, he missed the whole beginning part.
Oh, the identification, I can't even say that word.
I should have left there because of the.
Identification.
Indemnification.
Identification.
Defermentation.
Yeah.
IED devices, thank you. So you'd like us to approve that?
Yep.
I'll second, I'll make a motion for that effect.
Second?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. So St. Mary's will be.
Can you just, for my clarification, can you read that one more time?
The indemnification. Don?
The demnification.
See, he did it right, perfect, first time.
He practiced while we were butchering it.
24 years working in a law office.
Thank you.
Indentified a lot of things.
Um, let's see, selectmen reports, COA Building Committee met today, not, you know, moving forward. I did say to them, thanked Don for, Don Collins' first presentation, and said, I really think our board would like to see a timeline for what's going forward. You talked about coming to the town, Fall Town meeting with a request, I think then you should start setting out timeline inside your meetings for, by this date, we should be talking to an ARPA, by this date, we should be, because October's coming quick, and we have an advisory hearing beforehand, and maybe sending out to the state for quotes and stuff, so, and the summer is always difficult to get things done. So, at the next meeting, they're really gonna come back with, okay, this day, this day, this day, they meet every other week. Planning Board, I will tell you that they're talking about filling the associate member with a couple of people, and they might have something in the next couple of meetings to bring before our board. And that's it for my groups.
Planning Committee met last Tuesday, just went over the meeting with the selectmen and that stuff, and the next meeting is June 6th, and we're inviting the, uh, the heads of the PTO and the school councils, and, you know, give the same type of presentation and say, and then after that, we'll have, have meetings with parents, you know, forums in each town, so. Moving forward on that.
Okay. And we'd like to, uh, welcome the two new members of the school committee, Rich Rediker and Dr. Chira Basie.
Chira Basie, yeah.
Chira Basie, the committee, and Mrs. Carowana was reelected, and they will start July 1st, and we, we encourage them to think regionally. Greg?
Pretty quiet, we've got Water Commission meeting next week, so hopefully have more updates then.
Anything happening with parks or?
There's always something happening with parks, but.
Excellent.
Nothing, nothing burning.
Oh, I will say, I took a ride down Memorial Park, and I have to say, that, that.
Looks great.
Facility looks great, yep.
Steve does a great job in there.
When are they putting the things out? What's their target date?
It's usually Memorial Day weekend.
Roughly around then?
Roughly around there, yeah.
Did they have to get something fixed there or something, was that?
They had to get a bunch of stuff fixed last year, yeah, there was a bunch of the, the cleanouts that they had to get fixed, and one of the pressures, I think, one of the valves inside was going bad, I don't remember offhand exactly what they did, but they had people looking at, it's a tough facility to fix too, because nobody makes those anymore around here, you know, because we're well-water, so they had to have a regeneration system, and there's no other communities that have something like that, so to get somebody to come out here, it's, they're, they're coming out from Boston usually to fix it.
So you wanna connect them to the district?
No, I don't think there's enough supply for that.
Well, no, it would cut through the back, I think.
I just say, it's, it's, it's a difficult system to fix and maintain and, you know, keep up to date.
Sure. All right, that's kind of our report, so the last thing on the agenda, let's get back into our deep dive into where we stand with our admin assistant, board health coordinator, town administrator, the whole shebang, if you will, gentlemen.
I think we had a pretty clear direction last week, right?
I, I think, I, I think we should, again, I'll bring up, I think we should renew the town administrator's contract because of the way it's situated. the Town Administrator's contract because of the way it's situated. And, uh, that'll give us the stability we need. Um, and then I think, John, you've talked a lot about the, you know, the part-time Town Administrator, full-time Town Administrator. I think it's important to point out that although it's been part-time, we have been, you know, was guided through the, through the, uh, COVID, the pandemic, you know, town kept running, which I think is important, you know, to help of everybody in town, obviously. Uh, you know, we implemented the, the dispatch, we've implemented the ambulance service, we've done it, we, we've created a lot. So I think we need the stability going forward so we can have a, a, a good, strong plan of how we're going to go about hiring a full-time person.
Again.
Again, again. And I guess the question I were talking about full-time is, is I think one of the things we've got to decide is the hours. And when do you want to start that? If we decide to go five days a week, is that something next year or July 1 or tomorrow?
Well, that's a problem. Like I say, Pam's retiring September 15th, I believe, ballpark.
Right, right.
And funding wise, you know, we did talk about the fact, I mean, the job is funded for 30 hours a week. We can do, you know, five days a week at six hours a day and keep the same funding. Uh, possibly somebody that came in for the job would be down steps, you know, at the same grade but down steps. So you would think that, you know, the money would be there. So I think that part's okay. Is the board, that the other thing, amenable to the idea going, opening our office five days a week? It's still 30 hours a week.
The, the only question I have about that is does four days a week, would that be more attractive to hiring someone? You know what I mean? So they could, you know, they'd say, well, you know, I could do this job seven hours a day, four days a week. You know, because, you know, even, even in, in the 40-hour a week job, well, I've, you know, people get a day off in the week. You know, so I'm just wondering if that, if that's the, if that would be more attract, that's the only thing I'm thinking of.
I do think that would be more attractive. I think it would be less beneficial, but I think it would be more attractive in getting a person in.
But the nine to three might be more attractive for people who have, you know, outside interests. Okay, yeah, I'm in early, so to speak, but out early as well.
Yeah, but it's the five days a week, I think is the, is the issue there.
You know, and is, is six hours, would that a lot for somebody to do the job fully in six hours? I mean, I know there's a lot of statistics out there that say an eight-hour job is really six hours anyway.
Yeah.
Four hours on Saturday is worth eight hours during the week, I find.
Yeah.
But we do need to figure out where we're going there and talk about advertising that position. Um, I'm totally respectful of what you said about Town Administrator. We've been very fortunate with the effort Bob's put in. And just by judging by the fact the emails still show up over the weekend, we know he's 24/7, no matter what part of the world, however. And Bob said the same thing. You need to look ahead. I'm not going to be here for 10 more years.
I'm not, I'm not.
You've had it, right?
I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing, okay, I mean, I'm not arguing the point that we shouldn't look for a full-time administrator. What I'm looking for, we need to do something now, because I think it's fair to him to have a contract. And the contract, we only have to give him a two-week notice, you know?
Well, before we give him an interval, I hope it was the temporary contract, three months at a time, yeah.
And then, and then we, you know, we should, we should just have that in place. So then we can say, okay, this is who we have in place. This is what we, you know, don't forget, he put in 130,000 for a full-time person and we took it out. We took the 30,000 out. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't look for a full-time person. I'm just thinking as we move forward here, we need to make a decision because, make, you know, have a contract in place that then as we go through the other processes, we at least have someone here who's keeping the, keeping the ship float or rudder straight or something.
Let's look to extend six months.
Right. There's nothing, so we can't do it again if we have to, right.
And then, you know, in the meantime, you know, we have some decisions to make about the department.
Right, okay.
Looking for.
You know, I, if I can offer two cents here, I think if you can't reach conclusions now or an agreement now, um, maybe a special meeting, maybe a board retreat of some kind where this is the only thing we can talk about because it's a very complex situation. And I see these two people in the organization who are key to what goes on in the building, departing soon. And I think we need to get that squared away.
That's why I want to get your thing settled first.
Yeah, but that's an interesting question that you bring up there, a board retreat, which is, sounds good, but how do you do that with open meeting?
You have an open meeting.
Then what's the difference between having a, you know, the ninth, we had that type of thing, you know, it was supposed to be just this and what's the difference?
We used to go, we used to go to Amherst, to, um, a little college there and they, they had a meeting room. We'd go there Sunday morning. And it was an open meeting.
Yeah. Hosted at 1:00 AM.
So.
But I mean, I, I don't, I, you know, I'm not suggesting.
Before you had to record things, yeah, right.
What I want to say is a special meeting to go through this. And it, it may take another hour or two for you to reach consensus on the hour, the, the, the items that have been mentioned. Go to five, yes or no? If so, win. And also a decision on whether or not to try for an assistant Town Administrator and, you know, the administrator situation. You, you got.
Okay, can we, can we?
Very significant.
May I make a motion that we extend Bob's contract six months starting July 1st, I think.
Second.
No raise though, right?
No raise.
Status quo.
Status quo.
Second, all those in favor?
All right, okay. Now we got to talk about the retreat.
Retreat into North Road or Oak No?
July 4th? In where? New Hampshire? New Hampshire.
I got it. Post on Monday, we talk about it during our walk. Right?
That would be legal.
We have a 15-minute meeting along Main Street.
I guess it wouldn't be legal because you're not, you're not in one spot. You're, you're on the move. Which would not make the meeting accessible to.
Well, I don't, I disagree with that. We had to post, we had to post a meeting. Okay, we had a discussion about closing Hollow Road. We had to post a joint meeting with the Wolverham Board of Selectmen. We met at the top of North Road. We walked Hollow Road until we came out on Munson Road. And that was the meeting. You know, look at the, whether or not we're going to put the gate up. And that was a posted meeting.
Didn't we post when we visited the fire stations?
We did.
That's a good point, yeah. Well, yeah, but we were at a location. We didn't go from fire station to fire station. We had one location every time.
And didn't we go to two and one?
We went to, we went to one day. Anyhow, so I, I'm not opposed to a special meeting, I'm not opposed to a special meeting, just to hash through this, I mean.
Long walk from, when you leave the VFW or coming up the hill, there's nothing in between.
That's the shaded part though, so it's usually the cooler one.
This is also the week for Department Staff Meeting, which you're going, which will be on Zoom if you want to, and I'm going to raise this as the most important first question. And if you want to tune in to hear comments from our employees.
Well, we can't.
The code, pardon?
We can't.
Yeah.
No, we can't. I've.
Oh, oh, but you, you can listen.
No, you can't, because everybody sits in those chairs where John is and you cannot hear anything anybody says.
I think we have to solve that problem.
I think so too.
We do.
But I'm just saying, you know, I like zooming in, but you, maybe Mark, Wendell, and, and then, you know, at the other end. And I have to say, they usually have great comments. For all we know. So, all right, so another meeting. We could do the 25th, we could do sometime next week. The 31st, I think there's no other municipal meetings on the 31st.
31st is good.
Okay. Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
1:00 AM, I'll be around.
I'm up all night. Anytime.
So are we meeting on Mon, on Tuesday then?
No, uh, we're meeting on Tuesday.
Tuesday as our regular meeting.
It's our regular meeting, yeah.
I can't meet on the 31st.
What?
I can't, I can't, I'm, I'm going to be away on the 31st.
How about the 30th?
30th, I'll be here for the meet, the regular meeting, yeah.
And you're going away the 31st?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were going on a long weekend and you weren't going to be around the 30th either.
Are you going to be here the first? You coming back?
No, I, I'm just doing a long, long weekend, so.
Fishing?
Of course.
Oh, you're starting a long weekend on the 30th, basically. Oh, okay, 30th, okay. North?
Yes.
Nice, nice.
Grangely.
Hmm. You're on me, no.
Just through, just through, uh, Sunday.
Okay. Well, if I want to keep it there, I'm really not sure of the planning board schedule.
Well, what if we, what if we, what if we had two meetings on the 30th?
Well, really, it's not much different than what we're doing here. I mean, right now, then let's try to, all right.
Let's try to limit.
Let's limit what we have going on the 30th. Well, no. We got that darn, we're going to.
Dog thing, right.
Right, that's key. And that could be honestly, 20, 30 minutes right there, Don.
I don't think we have a lot of other pressing matters though.
No, we don't.
So, I mean.
Let's just put it on.
Let's put it on.
Trying to keep any for everything else off.
Right. Hey, they're going to be there when they be there. If you want to start at 5:30 with a dog hearing, that's fine too.
Yeah.
Right, right?
Yeah.
I have 30s, okay.
All right. So work with Shelley on getting those, the Williamses there, but.
Two meetings or one meeting?
One meeting.
One meeting.
One meeting, yeah. If we're, no, it's too late to that. I was saying, if we're talking contract numbers, could it be exactly, that's not fair, not right, yeah.
We wouldn't be talking contract numbers, no.
All right, that, that, um, any, anything else on that?
Good.
All right. So we have posted an executive session. Well, first, is there any other open meeting business to come before the board?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, how was the?
Excuse me, John, I just checked, 30th, I have the COA appointment. You want to keep that?
Yeah, that's pretty.
Dogs, dogs and COA.
Sure. Right, that's correct. I mean, we, well, we need to sit Perez here. I'm going to have her here and probably Becky and whoever chair of the board.
COA first.
Yeah, to COA first.
Right. Okay, seeing no other business, we have posted an executive session. And I'm entertaining a motion to open executive session for the stated purpose without a return to open session.
So moved.
Uh, no, I was hoping you'd read the whole purpose.
Okay, I, I will, we, uh, move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. The Turk Chairman has determined open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And, uh, we will not return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor, by name, John?
Donald Downport, aye.
Craig Rivers, aye.
All right. Thank you all, uh, have a good week and, uh, we will see you on Memorial Day.